All right, it is seven. We will go ahead and get started. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the 2021 League of Women Voters of Moscow Candidate Forum. My name is Kylie Brightman, and I'm on the board of the League of Women Voters of Moscow. Tonight's forum will be featuring the city council candidates. We want to remind everyone that with the number of candidates that we have here and the amount of time we have, which is an hour and a half tonight, we will not be able to address every question that has been submitted. However, we strongly encourage you to reach out to the candidates with your questions directly. We view this as the beginning of the conversation, where we hope that you get to know the candidates and then follow up after the event. This event is also streaming live on KRFP. And in addition to the League's forums that we've held this week, KRFP will be holding live call-in candidate forums on the radio. Those call-in forums for the city council candidates will be Thursday night this week and Monday, October 25th. The KRFP call-in forum for the mayor candidates will be Tuesday, October 26th, and all of those forums are going to start at 6:30 PM and will last an hour. The questions for tonight's event have been collected by email, and we also welcome questions on the League of Women Voters of Moscow Facebook page. And for those of you watching on Zoom, you can submit questions through the Q&amp;A function. We also want to remind everyone that the League of Women Voters of Moscow has put together the Vote411 resource. So unfortunately, not all of the candidates were able to attend our event tonight due to other conflicts that were occurring. So we have had all of the candidates graciously answer questions for Vote411, and those responses and more information on the candidates can be found at vote411.org. The format for tonight will be a two-minute introduction from each candidate, and then our moderator will ask a series of questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question, and then we'll conclude with a one-minute summary from each candidate. We are so excited to introduce our moderator for tonight, Professor Richard Seaman of the University of Idaho College of Law. I will now turn it over to him to start our candidate introductions, and thank you again for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much. We'll get started with letting the candidates introduce themselves. And with his first series of introductions, I'm going to go alphabetically. So Ms. Klein, I'm going to start with you. You'll need to unmute yourself.
All right, perfect. Good evening, and I'm very happy to be here. My name is Melissa Klein. I am new to the area. I am originally from Washington. My family and I moved here this summer. I have six children. And I'm a homeschooler. I'm currently not employed, but I do a lot of work at home. Kind of a jack-of-all-trades sort of a mom. I'm not sure what else to say.
Well, that's, that's, gets us started very nicely. Thank you very much. Mr. Harmon, you're next.
Thank you so much, and I want to also extend my thanks to the League of Women Voters. And I'm really appreciative and allowing me to be on the Vote411.org as well as being invited to this panel. You guys are doing great work. Thank you so much. My name is Steve Harmon, and I am a small business owner. I've been self-employed for about 22 years, and I've lived in the Moscow area with my beautiful wife and five children for about the last five years. Before that, we lived in Portland, Oregon. And that, I moved there shortly after I graduated from Washington State University in, with a degree in broadcast communication in 1999. So that's kind of how I first got my, dipped my toes in the water here in the Palouse, and it turned out to be a really great place to be able to move my family. So I was able to relocate my businesses. And one of the reasons we moved here was definitely for Logos school for our children, some also homeschooling co-ops that we're involved in, and also just kind of for a fresh breath of air when it comes to freedom and liberty that only a place like Idaho can really provide. So we're really happy to be here, happy to be involved, and stoked to hopefully serve as a city council.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis, you're next.
Good evening. Thanks again to the League for hosting. I grew up in Moscow, so I participated in every mock election that the League hosted at the 1912 Center growing up. My grandma has been involved in the League for many years, and she has a great story about the, I think it was the 2000 election where I wrote my name on my ballot because, for the League. So I grew up here. I am a proud product of Moscow School District. Oop, I'm getting a note that says my internet's unstable, so hopefully I'm not too choppy. But I've always been drawn to public policy, understanding hard issues, and I do that for my day job as well. I am a policy analyst at SEL in Pullman and analyze policy for Washington and Idaho State, as well as some local policies. And I've been with SEL for nine years, and with my day job, it just has, you know, deepened my desire to solve really big problems. And I also hope to offer council the perspective of a young person who grew up here and is choosing to stay here and start a family with my fellow, my fiancee Garrett, who is an engineer who challenges me to think differently than I would normally about some issues, and our dog Ringo. So happy to be here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker, you're next.
Good evening. I'm Julia Parker, and I have lived in Moscow for about 20 years, a little longer. And I work as a nurse in geriatrics. I also have a background in natural resources. Those two things give me a pretty holistic view of problem solving. And that's really what I do day-to-day, is work on problem solving with families and, and the elderly. I really like to use a framework for decision-making, and that's looking at the triple bottom line, which is environmental sustainability, economic viability, and community well-being. So that's the framework that I would use as a city council member to make decisions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Russo, you're next.
You got that really well, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Moscow, and good evening, voters. I am Gina Truccio, and I'm happy to be here again. It's always fun. I got here on May 20th of 1994 and moved from Norman, Oklahoma. Didn't know that can have four seasons in one day, but on the 20th, when I, when I drove in, it was snowing. It got sunny and it rained at the same time. And I'm getting the same little note that Haley got about. Basically, I've had the, the joy for the last 27 years working with and for business. I have raised, well, we, my husband and I have raised both of our kids. I'm a Vandal grad. I feel like Moscow raised me in the 27 years I have been here, and we are also business owners ourselves. So I pride myself in doing the right things, the right reasons, and I'm anxious to do it again for Moscow.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you so much for having me, and I'm excited to be here this evening with all of you. And I apologize to folks with their internet connectivity issues. It's, I hope that that's not the same thing with me here. I'm happy to talk with you. I'm newer to Moscow, but I love it here. I got my bachelor's degree from BYU Idaho in Healthcare Administration, and my master's degree from Washington State University in Health Policy and Administration. I currently work as a senior HR generalist at Pullman Regional Hospital in Pullman. And so I'm kind of on the front lines with understanding things concerning our global pandemic, as well as policies in regard to hiring individuals and what we can do to establish good cultures at work. I have a wife and two children, a little two-month-old who makes sure to keep me up at night so I don't sleep at all, and a three-and-a-half-year-old little girl named Claire. And she's a little fiery, fiery little girl. I have a little dog named Rufus. He's a Pomche, and he's cute. And so, and about me, I, I love the, the family-centeredness of Moscow. I've just been very impressed by this community, by the people that we've met at the, like, 17-plus parks that are here. I mean, I haven't been to all of them, but there's just so many. And I'm excited to continue to give back to this community and continue to make decisions that will benefit us as a whole. I'm really interested in collaboration, trying to bring people together to make common consensus that really just benefits everybody. I look forward to answering your questions. I'm happy to talk to you in my email, too, if, if we don't answer those today in tonight's forum. So thank you again for having me and look forward to speaking with you.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll go in reverse alphabetical order for the first question. So Mr. Taylor, you're up again. This is a question about COVID. COVID-19 infections and deaths continue to be a major concern in Leitog County. What policies would you like to see in place to protect our residents, particularly younger children who are not yet able to receive the COVID vaccine?
Thank you so much for that. The, where I stand on issues with this is I want to make sure that we, we continue to prevent as much spread of illness as, as we can. And so I would highly recommend individuals to become vaccinated. Vaccines have been proven to be safe and effective, and they really do help prevent the severity of illness from encroaching on individuals' lives. You can still get sick with COVID-19 if you're vaccinated. It doesn't necessarily prevent completely from getting sick, but it can prevent the likelihood of hospitalization and severity of illness. So one of the biggest things that I would do is just try and educate folks to make sure that they, if they haven't already, seriously consider getting the vaccine. Now, I do recognize the, the right of individuals to make that decision for themselves, and I'll stand by that as well. I would also, would like to encourage individuals to understand the importance of washing their hands, doing the things that we typically do in a flu and cold season. If you, if you're sick or if you're, you're, you're having symptoms, maybe it's not a good idea to be around people who are elderly or immunocompromised. Basically, all those things that we should be doing on, on a yearly basis, especially around this time of the year with the flu and now COVID-19 being so rampant. So I would recommend precautionary procedures that we, we find with, like, a flu season. Washing your hands, making sure to be socially distant. If you are sick from individuals, you're sick, actually stay home. And a lot of people are finding that it's easier to work from home nowadays, that we've had that pandemic. People have kind of kicked it in gear with technology and Zoom, and here we are, meeting virtually. So anyway, I, I hope that we can help as a community to stay healthy and thrive physically. And then I also hope that with these policies, we can continue to thrive financially, and the businesses can continue to stay open, and that's what I would hope for.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Truccio, next.
Thank you, sir. Kirk, you rocked that answer. That, that is essentially how I feel about things. I will say that I feel very strongly that government really needs to let individuals choose the healthcare that they receive. I think that our role as city councillors and as a city government, it's important to educate and give as much good information as we can, make everyone aware of the opportunities. I think Dr. Bailey at the, at the school district is doing an awesome job helping our babies stay safe and healthy. You know, I think that, I think that we, as a community, are tight enough that I think we could come together and, and, and respect each other's wishes and mask when we need to go into a specific business and not when we go into others. That's, that's an okay thing. But I think that as far as a governmental body, we should not enact any policy that, that steps over into healthcare. But I will encourage, I personally am vaccinated and do carry my mask around because I know I want to frequent certain businesses that require it, so.
Thanks very much. Ms. Parker, you're next.
This issue is, is, is very near and dear to my heart because I've worked as a nurse through the pandemic. It's been extremely difficult for healthcare workers. I got COVID. I got really sick. It's had some long-term impacts on my health. And so it's, it's hard for me to, to have a lot of sympathy for people who cannot do the simple thing of wearing a mask because it's really easy. And it's protecting your neighbors, and it's protecting businesses that want to stay open, and it's protecting our healthcare resources. If we have our hospitals full of COVID patients, then other people cannot be seen. I've seen this happen. I work in Pullman, and Pullman is limiting access to the hospital. And I've, I've had patients turned back home who could have gotten care because the hospital is full. And so I, I feel really strongly that people should do the right thing, and we should continue to be wearing masks indoors. We should be getting the vaccine. And that, that's your choice in terms of the vaccine, but you very well may lose your job if you choose not to get it, if you work in something like healthcare. So I, I just, I feel like, I feel like I'm begging my neighbors at this point. I'm begging you to do the right thing, to protect each other, and to help give healthcare resources and healthcare workers a break by not continuing to spread COVID.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis, you're next.
Thank you. I think as far as policy goes, keeping in mind that the scope of what a city council should have control over is important for this conversation. I think it's important to listen to those closest to the issues. So the school district leaders, the teachers, who are teaching kids who aren't eligible, aren't yet eligible to get a vaccine. I'm crossing my fingers for that Pfizer announcement. And I'm actually, I'm going to turn off my video because everything's really choppy and sick. Let's see if that gets any better. And I also think it's really important to listen to our hospitals, official, hospital officials, if they're telling us that a further guidance, given a situation or COVID numbers, is important, such as a mask requirement or mask mandate or recommendation would be helpful to shaping our community's health. I want them to feel heard, and I want the community at large to feel heard. I think the other piece of this is grassroots communications. I do think that the folks who were skeptical of the idea of the vaccine or testing or COVID itself are likely not thrilled at the idea of a mandate. And I think there is a piece of education that can come from the city, absolutely, but I do think that small conversations are the way to change hearts and minds on this issue. And the other thing I'll say about masks, I don't, the, the, the question of if masks work or not is, is settled in my mind. I'm happy to share resources. Masks work. I think the bigger question that gets brushed over is if people, the desire of wanting to wear a mask or not. And that, I think, needs to be looked at separately from the actual science of masks because masks work. And if our hospital tells us that masks, an indoor mask guidance would be the difference between me getting in a car crash and seeing emergency service, emergency services or not, I want them to feel heard and that recommendation to be explored, given the data at hand. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Yeah, I have a very different opinion based off of data. It's all been Haley and probably Julia. I do not believe that masks work, and I do not believe that they work, especially or are needed for children. I really don't think children need masks or, and they also don't believe that they actually need a vaccine. Now, that's my opinion on the issue, except for the fact that, of course, the data around masks has shown us that any country that has implemented, implemented masks after their first bump has had the same similar curve. We've seen no country that's actually done better than another because of mask mandates. So we, I would say that it's, that this is, this is settled science. It's not really something that is up for a lot of debates. There's some small things masks can do. If you're going to be around somebody for less than 15 minutes and you want to cut down on some degree, if they're snotty or they're sneezy, maybe you can do something there. But as far as actually stopping into the aerosols in the air, especially kids at school who are going to be in the classroom for longer than 15 minutes, read your package. Read what the package says on there. Look at the studies about influenza and how masks are not helpful. And I think that that's, unfortunately, it's a politicized opinion. I don't think it's, it's not, it's not political, really. It's actually just fact-based. Either which way, the only takeaway here is I don't want anybody to have to show their papers. If you and your doctor determine that you need to wear a mask, that's awesome. If you and your doctor determine that you need to get a vaccine, that is awesome. And that's really where we are in America. Unfortunately, we're dealing now with things where it's been politicized, and it's been put into laws that now make it so we don't have a great coach at WSU. And we see people like our, our leaders at the Moscow and Pullman School District saying things like, "We think the masks are working," with completely no doubt, all anecdotal. And really, this is hurting kids' social experience. It's hurting the morale. It's keeping them longer indoors, and it is all very senseless.
Thank you very much. Ms. Klein?
All right. Hi. So I am against mask mandates. I am against vaccine mandates. I think that it's a personal choice and that we don't have any business pushing those kind of medical decisions on anyone. I, I am very saddened to see, excuse me, small children not being able to see people's faces as they're learning. It's quite devastating to me to see everything that's happening because of this 0.26 whatever percent. So that's where I stand.
Thank you very much. All right. Ms. Parker, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll pose this next question to you. It has to do with new development in Moscow. And the question is, how do you propose to ensure that new developments in Moscow are water and energy sustainable and affordable, especially given that the state of Idaho does not allow local municipalities to mandate stricter energy code standards than the state's baseline level?
Well, the way that question is asked, it is, shows how complicated the issue is. And it is a balance between affordable and also environmentally sustainable and also balancing water, water use. So it is a complicated issue, but I think there are things that we can look at in terms of affordable housing as well as water conservation that might help. If you look at the history of the city's water use and our growth, the curves are, are not in line. They're actually, they actually cross each other. And so it just really shows that conservation works and that our larger users of water, like the University of Idaho and irrigation for parks and things like that, can, can be affected through water reuse, like gray use, or use of gray water to reduce our overall consumption of water. So I think that they aren't necessarily mutually exclusive. You can continue to conserve if you do grow well. In terms of affordable housing, I think there are different resources out there that can contribute to affordable housing. There are federal and state programs, as well as nonprofits, like the Affordable Housing Trust that can help with affordability. And we can also incentivize, explore incentivizing building right-sized housing, smaller housing, and a diversity of housing stock in town. Not everybody needs a four-bedroom, three-bath home. So it's really important to look at the diversity of housing to make it more affordable as well.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis, would you go next?
You betcha. I think there's a balancing act for, again, what makes sense for this, for the role of city government to play a role in. And so I think there, I think the work that's been done with the Police Basin Aquifer Committee in particular is a good example of what a, a strong communications plan and a public education forum can provide for consumers. And the other, so as far as, I know there's two new subdivisions that have ruffled some feathers that were developments that were approved, phase ones of these developments. And what I would say is the, as those decisions went through for planning and zoning and annexation and in front of the council, all of those things, all those decisions were, were made and had the recommendation of pass because of existing code. And so if there's something that's happening with the current, with these recent developments that is not satisfactory to the community, it is on the city council to address it in city code. I do think there's a balance, though, of not, the affordable housing. I'm guessing there may be another question tonight about it because it's a really big beast to unpack. And I don't, I don't mention the other issues that come up or list all the subtopics that go with this issue to sidestep the problem. I'm hoping to help demonstrate that it's a really complicated issue, and for us to get through it as a community, we're going to have to address all of them and speak all of those problems into, into, bring it into a realm of just, the realm of public debate, so to speak. So how to make sure they're more efficient? I mean, the new developments, there, the, the decision's been made. I do think that there's something to be said about educating our developers about what our community would like to see in terms of water and energy efficiency. I'm a little more hesitant to create requirements or more hoops for a developer to jump through because I don't think that's going to help us in the long run for affordable housing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, would you go next, please?
Yeah, I'd love to. And Rich, can you repeat the, the statement for me, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. How do you propose to ensure new developments in Moscow are water and energy sustainable and affordable, given the state of Idaho does not allow local municipalities to mandate stricter energy code standards than the state's baseline level? It's worth repeating.
It is. It's kind of a packed question, and I honestly feel like I would need, I would need to have a discussion about that and kind of walk through it to fully answer each of those multifaceted parts of that question and understand more so what the state of Idaho is saying with its base level. I don't, I don't know necessarily what that means, but I would love to look into that. Right off the bat, in order to answer that question, I would do what some of my counterparts are saying. And I think that we can take a look at the kind of housing that we're building, the, the size of housing that we're building. I, I guess I could backtrack and say, "We need more housing. That's, it's an absolute necessity, and we got to figure out a way to do that." Now, what that means is, if that means we need to take a look at it and say, "Okay, we need maybe a little bit smaller of housing," or maybe more efficient housing that utilizes energy and a lower cost, or maybe zero-escaped housing developments that don't utilize as much water consumption, water conservation, things like that. But we got to start figuring out ways to produce more housing. And the reason why that is, is because we want more people to come here in a sustainable way because that means more revenue for our businesses. It means more growth, and people are benefited ultimately because of that. I would, I would try and encourage citizens to be conservative in their use of water as we look to actively try and find a solution that would benefit our community. I know that we've got multiple organizations working already on, on, on new water alternatives rather than our aquifers. And so I guess that's what I would have to say, and I'm sorry that I can't address specifically. And I'm sorry that I can't address um specifically what Idaho's uh regulations are concerning those um and what a more granular approach to that would be. That's where I would start.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Klein, would you go next, please? And you need you need to unmute.
Sorry. So I've done I've done quite a bit of research on off grid living. And um I think that solar panels are a great place to start. Uh personal responsibility, um managing these things on our own. There are ways to collect rainwater and filter it with a Berkey. Um they have new graphene filters that are great. Um there's lots of technology coming out that could help. Um I I don't know that much about uh that housing. I mean, I I live in a housing that's not perfect myself, having just moved here recently. Um but um I think that when the community gets together and does things together as a group with each other, that could possibly be a way to do something like that.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Harmon, would you go next, please?
Yeah, I'm excited for a lot of the opportunities we have in sustainable and um more high density housing. And I think that the way we can do it first and foremost is by having some tax rebate incentives, some um uh moratoriums on on perhaps taxes for some new and some new types of housing. Maybe that cater to either smaller groups or just smaller uh smaller code would would allow, excuse me, building for smaller buildings based upon the code. And that's actually, I looked actually into doing an ADU, and I've looked into things like trailers and things like that. And our 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 current code, as far as what I know now, I could be wrong. I heard something came up about this uh in the um the city council. Maybe Gina can talk about that later. Related to allowing things for like tiny homes and such as such things like that. And I know I know when I was looking into it, uh the code would not allow anything smaller than like a maybe a thousand square feet or or larger building. And so I think there's some housing justice issues there for people who don't necessarily need to live in a large footprint. I also think you're going to have a lot less environmental impact. And I think that there's um uh opportunities to really love our neighbor if we let them kind of deal with more infill. And that's just really going to be that is going to be a city issue. It's going to be zoning. It's going to be code. And I think it's also going to be tax rebates. And I think that's stuff we can really be aggressive about. And we want to incentivize builders. When you give um the the new homeowner uh either a moratorium or a gradual increase of their taxes over years, that's much less. That incentivizes people to want to buy those and incentivizes the builder. It incentivizes the builders to want to get after that. So there's a lot of cool things I think we can do that um are going to save money for the new home buyers as well as for the developers, and everybody can can get excited about that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russo.
Thank you. This forum is an example of what needs to happen. So I think the city has a responsibility to facilitate the conversation and the development of not the same old four bedroom. What it was it Julia, four bedroom and three bathroom houses? We need to be able to have these conversations. And through making sure that our codes are exactly um open and allow these kind of things and that our ordinances are in place that will allow accessory dwelling units and and um tiny homes in RV parks and things like that. We absolutely but then then we need to get out of the way. And we need to have these kind of conversations with different ideas. I don't know if we can do a tax rebate or not, Steve, but what a good idea. So we need to be to to do that. All right, so I'm going to tease these this question apart a degree. The water situation in Moscow right now is um we're doing, I believe, a very good job in developing a very measured, thoughtful, research based approach on those four water alternatives that uh P back has been researching. As soon as they bring us that report in winter of twenty two, this kind of conversation needs to happen again. The citizenry needs to get a hold of it, and we all need to to grab it and make it our solution. Okay? Energy conservation. I think that the city itself, meaning the city buildings and the city vehicles and the city operations, are doing a very good job of conserving the energy that we can. We're starting to switch over police vehicles. Believe it or not, there are some really interesting electric vehicles that go fast enough to catch bad guys. So that's kind of cool. But we're doing an eco driver program. We're doing a lot of good, solid steps forward. I do not we say to our citizens how they run their households. But I think we can serve very good example of, hey, look, this is a cool idea for solar panels, like Melissa said, or for um alternative electrical supplies or or, you know, the sky's the limit, really. But we should serve it as example and then encourage that kind of thing to be in our citizens as well.
Thank you very much. Um Ms. Lewis, for the next question, I'll start with you if you don't mind. Moscow has a non discrimination ordinance that prohibits discrimination based on sexual orientation and or gender expression slash identity in employment, housing, commercial property, and use of public accommodations. Do you believe this ordinance should be expanded, narrowed, or maintained, and why?
The great question. I uh from I think it's I think as it's written currently, to my best understanding, it's it it is the uh it's it's right. I would also want to make sure that our community knows that if there's other groups that are feeling marginalized or oppressed that they that the city would be able to make a statement for it originally. If I remember right, the inspiration for the non discrimination ordinance was because the state of Idaho would not add the words uh in the state constitution. Uh nope, uh state constitution, I think. Oh, shoot, now I I gotta and my fourth grade teacher is going to be so sad of me for not getting my Idaho history right. But um the I I think the ordinance is needed. I'm glad it's there, and I would have voted for it had I been on city council. So I'll keep my answer short and sweet. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Harmon, would you go next?
Yeah, I'm I'm very skeptical of any government body that is going to choose any specific groups to give any particular special treatment to. Hopefully, we are um loving all our neighbors in a way that we're not discriminating against them based upon any of these things. I would say more prescient right now than this is like, I mean, we we can always just keep adding something on to this. But hopefully, again, we're not having any kind of discrimination uh for any kind of protected class. I hope that's going to be gender. That's going to be religious. Uh that's going to be anybody. I so sometimes I think these things are posturing. Um if that makes people feel safer, I'm not necessarily against it. Hopefully, it's not um something that's we just don't want more more special people. Hopefully, everybody's a special person and everybody gets treated with the same dignity and respect in our town, especially in public. And um I don't I don't know what we would do to add to that. I'd have to see what the proposal would be if we're going to add to that. But as far as what I'd see right now is that hopefully, all people should have their basic rights and human rights respected.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, would you go next?
Yeah, thank you so much, Rich. Um I would like to just quote the Declaration of Independence. It's on my Facebook page, but I say, you know, we hold these truths to be self evident that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that's kind of where I would go back to with this is kind of sounds like what this ordinance is with our city that um all men are created equal and that we have certain unalienable rights that shouldn't be infringed upon. And and there shouldn't be policies that prevent prevent us from doing this and those things for approaching life and the pursuit of happiness and liberty. Um I think that it's our role as a city city council to make sure that we don't create barriers that make it harder for people to do those things regardless of and where they stand on certain things. Um so that's that's where I would come from in that stance. And I I think it's important to note that we don't do things. If we do instigate policies, if people um have been uh if if they feel like they need extra um service or extra help, that um we continue to treat people as fairly as possible and and that we don't in the in a way discriminate other folks who haven't been in the past to help others who have been. That makes sense. Um we we can't we can't solve fire with fire. Uh we can't we can't solve racism with more racism, you know? Um we have to come together to 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 come to a collaboration and 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 an approach that allows all men to feel like they're created equal um and to have an equal opportunity um to these life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Russo, would you go next, please?
I'm not going to even try to say it better than that, Kirk. Nice, nice quoting the Constitution. I um and I don't know honestly if it's the Constitution or the golden rule that I normally operate under. But I think as a city councillor, it's my responsibility to make sure that uh people have a chance to be heard. And if there is someone who feels discriminated against, I need to give them the opportunity to be heard. And if it is indeed a a discrimination moment, I have to take it up from there. You know, and it goes up to the mayor and we have to talk through things. And if it's something that's we can find that's endemic throughout our community, it's our responsibility to to deal with it. Okay, and and I mean putting forth, if we have to, Steve, I'm sorry. We might have to add another group of special people. But but I think that it is very important to remember that we all are guaranteed those rights. And and even during times like this that are crazy and and everybody's mad at everybody, we need to remember that we are all part of this community and we all have the right to be heard and to act in our own self interest and and that sort of thing. But then we're part of a whole as well. And so we need to be able to do greater good too.
Thank you very much. Ms. Klein, would you go next?
Well, uh everything that I was going to say has been said. Um yes, I totally agree um that the golden rule is the way to go. And I'm glad that you guys have a policy of uh non discrimination here. I'm not exactly sure how to answer the question more than what's already been said.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker?
Um I think, yes, we should maintain this policy. To speak a little bit to some of the other answers, we can't just hope that there's no discrimination. I think we learned that in the fifties and sixties. We had to codify anti discrimination legislation to to make consequences for people who would continue to discriminate based on race, say. So I I do think these kind of policies are important because I do think uh the that LGBTQ folks are discriminated against um in housing and in other areas. And so I do think it's important to put that in. Um in terms of uh Kyle talking about the Declaration of Independence, which I I are sorry, Kirk. I like Kirk, he's a nice guy. But uh I have to say, um maybe the League of Women Voters is not the place to talk about how all men are created equal. Um because uh you know, we're not all men. Um and and um we could say, oh, well, they really meant humans, but they they didn't. They meant white um property owning men. So that's why we've had um the Bill of Rights. That's why we've had um anti discrimination legislation. And so I do think it's important to codify that um in order for our society to continue to move forward.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Harmon, if you don't mind, I'll start with you on this next question. And it's going in a little different direction from some of the specific issues we've talked about so far. The request is, please tell us about a specific time that you had to make a difficult decision that you knew some of the people affected would not like. How did you go about making that decision and communicating it to those affected?
Well, uh I guess I can think of something I did today. Um I actually had to um uh let one of my employees go. Uh as somebody who's owned a multiple businesses through my life, I've actually had to hire and fire a lot of people. I don't like using the word fire always because oftentimes it's not that. It's usually uh because uh either there's a budgetary concern or something like that. So um that's very hard to do, and it's uh it's upsetting uh for everybody involved, I think. I hope this fits what you're asking, but I guess this is something prescient on my mind today. So um uh gosh, I think I think that really trying to be sensitive to what the the people around are experiencing in a situation like that, taking the time to explain, taking time to listen and uh not treating it as cavalier. And I think oftentimes, if you listen to somebody else's uh way of approaching something or their attitude toward it, it makes them definitely feel better. I think everybody likes to be heard. So uh that that's an experience I've had more than I'd like to do over the many years. But um uh also, I'd say in a situation like that is try to offer either some uh hopeful advice. Sometimes it's sometimes it's good not to give advice in a situation like that. At times, if someone's feeling upset. But I would say trying to also show how I'm going to be an advocate and care for that person in the future, even if something isn't working with us. So in this case, I'm trying to help this person actually acquire a new job that's that's going to pay better for them down the road and also uh be able to give them some intern work that's not related to this, but to try to care for those things and also facilitate just their needs afterwards. And so I don't instead of dropping it like a hot rock, uh trying to stay involved in that person's life as much as I possibly can. So I don't know if that addresses it, but uh again, that's on my mind.
Thank you very much. Ms. Russo, would you go next?
Wow, here's an eight hundred pound gorilla question. Come on, um. There was, I don't know that there's been any decision that was harder for me to make than the um fear driven um mask mandate that we that we put in place. I very much believe in individual rights. I I don't believe that government should dictate. And and in spite of that belief, I I think we made the right decision. And I think that I made the right decision in spite of my own personal beliefs to protect public health. Okay? What I learned through this whole process is that um my belief still is there. And I think that the mandate, instead of going into maybe a recommendation first and easing into it um and then mandating if we had to, I think that what I learned is that being heavy handed or being precipitous, maybe I'm I'm even those words are making me uncomfortable. But the fact of the matter was that I think that the mandate did tend to divide us a little bit. And I think that um what this has done for me is helped me learn that um I can't ignore my own personal feelings anymore. And even if I'm only one of six, I need to speak out. And now my responsibility is to try to help rebuild and to allow the citizens to be heard. And um and I've learned that I won't be able to sleep really well if I vote in favor of a mandate in the future, which I absolutely won't. So um so I don't know the I forgot the other part of your question, sir, but I think it was talk about a bad decision and or hard decision and how you dealt with it. Um dealing with it now, as far as the fallout, I'm just creating as many communication opportunities as I can. I have a website. I have my email. I'm out and about. I sit in Cafe Artista all the time. I sit in front of Utsers. You know, people see me and and I'm fairly distinctive with this crazy hair. So it is something that I feel really passionate about now.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Taylor, would you go next?
Uh thank you. Um I think I'm going to have to speak to the part of the uh human resources side of me. Um and of course, it's going to be probably similar to some other folks with I'm going to let people go, but that's always a hard decision. And you know, I think the way that we approach it, I really enjoy. Uh I got a backtrack. I don't enjoy firing people ever. But but I think the way that we go about doing it is a way um where I think both parties involved actually kind of make meet a consensus and kind of make me to consensus. And so we have a saying is either stay in joy or, or leave in peace. There's, there's no staying in animosity. We don't, we don't want you to stay really uptight or angry or things like that. And I'm, I'm not trying to dive too, too far into, you know, company policy or anything like that. But why, why bring that up is because the way I approached difficult decisions is trying to establish a very good correspondence of communication with employees or individuals, or in this case, citizens of Moscow, and, and have that kind of communication from the very get-go. And and then talk with them throughout all these decisions that we make. And if, if it means leaving in peace, then, then leave in peace and and that's kind of the way that we've approached things and it's, it's helped a lot. I'm all about second and third chances and trying to make and work with people in their individual circumstances in their lives. You know, with difficult decisions, I think the, the best thing that we can do is to get as much buy-in as possible, get as much communication from the community as possible. So that way, when we make a decision, it seems to have as much correspondence or much response from the community. And that's the way I would approach things moving forward. I would try and educate the best that I could and really try and help people to see that all parties involved, we're trying to do this for your benefit. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Klein, would you go next?
Can, can you restate the question again?
Certainly. Please tell us about a specific time that you made a difficult decision that you knew some of the people affected wouldn't like. How did you go about making the decision and communicating it to those affected?
Okay, so I'm going to use the example of moving my family out of the state that they have lived majority of their life in. I used, basically it was a logical decision. I guess I don't really need to get into the actual reasons, but it seemed that it was basically a matter of, you know, not life or death, but morals and our future. And I think that by educating my family about what our concerns were of why we needed to relocate and where we wanted to go and why did help with the bad feelings. And I also took into consideration some things that would, we could bring along to help heal that hurt. For us, it was having, making sure that we brought our pets with us. That's just a small token, but it can really mean a lot when you moved a lot, have a lot of change in your life. I often have to make hard decisions as a mother. I am a leader. I tend to take a logical approach, but I always consider people's feelings. It's kind of a base by base situation of what to do in those situations.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Lewis, you're next.
I appreciate that this is a, a job interview-esque question because in my mind, this is a job interview. So I, it's a good question. So when I was at the University of Idaho, I started a chapter of a nonprofit called Nurish International with some other peers in the International Studies Program. And after a year of work and fundraising, we had signed a contract or an agreement with a nonprofit in Indonesia and to, to commit some funds to a project, but there were some really definitive parameters to what they had to, that what, what they could use the money on. And when one of the big things that drew me to the program in general is the funds that we were giving was meant to be something to solve a solution, to, to equip the community with a solution and trust the community to come up with a solution that's best for them. And it also meant that we would go in intern with a nonprofit. And so, but by us going as students, we couldn't be replacing labor that was happening. So that's background on the actual organization. But when when we got there, the project that we had signed an agreement for, for I think $5,000 in a year of fundraising and us reaching out to all our friends and family, the project had actually already been completed for several years. And so we, they had told us they would start a recycling and education program. And we got there and we found out this program had been in existence the whole time. And so the group of eight of us were sitting and were living in these two separate houses. And there was a really, really big group divide between the two and it was hard. We all felt so, we felt like we had done something wrong and we just weren't talking about it. And so I was the chapter leader at the time. And so I had to sit my trip leaders down week two into a 10-week internship and say, how do you think this is going? And I remember they looked at each other and said, I think it's going okay. And they said, well, how do you think it's going? And I said, I don't think it's going okay. I think you've got a, a team that's not wanting to talk to each other. And there's a really big, we're all very concerned about the consequences of this program. And I'm, I know I'm over time, but the gist is there were some tears. There was a really hard conversation, but what I learned from that was we reached out to our advisor. We had to talk, we had to speak the issue into existence. And then we asked for help on how to address it with the organization we were working with. Because we, there were, and at the end of the day, there were some cultural differences that we've come to terms with, but it was, it was a really eye-opening experience. I would likely handle the, I remember the conversation being really emotionally driven. And I've, I've learned from that conversation and how to handle it better next time. But hard conversations are just that. And, and I know they get better with practice and more of them, but I'm not looking forward, no one wants to have a hard conversation, but I think without them, you know, we're never going to learn how to have a better one the next time around. So.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker?
This question kind of made me laugh because I thought about, you know, I've raised four kids and I make a lot of unpopular decisions. So it's, you know, we, those people that know me know that every Friday night we watch a movie and and I'm not sure there's ever been a Friday night that we've all agreed and somebody isn't disappointed, but more serious examples. I, I do, even in that example, I try to be fair. So, you know, with my kids, we take turns. So if you're not real excited about the movie this Friday, then you know that it's your turn next week and you get to pick. But I do try to be fair when I have to make a hard decision that affects other people. I always try to listen to like my coworkers or my, I'm, I'm kind of the boss at work. And so I try to listen to the people that I supervise and understand how they're feeling about a decision. And I try to explain my reasoning and get buy-in with, with people and try to compromise and make, make, make a decision that may be difficult or painful. I try to make it as team oriented as possible. I try to get as much buy-in as possible by listening and, and being flexible in how I make a decision. So I do that a lot, especially right now with our limited resources and healthcare and our, our staffing shortages, you know, we are making a lot of decisions that impact employees that they have to work harder or they have to do more jobs or things like that. And so it's not a very popular, easy sell, but I do always try to listen and do what's best for the whole group.
Thank you very much. Ms. Russo, I'll start with you for this next one, if you don't mind. This is, starts with a statement, "A variety of values and different opinions exist among the candidates here. Part of city government means working together. How would you find a way to work effectively together with people you disagree with?"
Thank you. I think that grace, the very primary and first thing that I would bring, that I do bring to council is listening. I respect very much all of my cohorts, including the mayor, and I don't walk in the door feeling like I know everything. So it's important for me to gather data from all areas, including my own self, but these, these five or six people up on the desk with me are indeed people that I respect and I want to. I also work regularly, like I said in my previous tour, to, to communicate with citizens about issues that are coming before us. If I can answer an email or if I can have a, like Haley said, a, maybe a crucial conversation, maybe not a hard one, but one that's very important. In a, an area or Cafe Artista or wherever that, that maybe more than one person could listen or that sort of thing. I try really hard to make myself available for that. I read and read and read and read. And I try to also bring an opinion to the table as well. So I listen, I try to communicate as much as I can. I do a lot of research and and I know that, that Brandy Sullivan will agree with me. We have a lot of conversations after the council meetings. I still think you're great. I, I just needed to disagree, you know, so you've got to be mature enough to say, oh yeah, we got to agree to disagree and life is good and, and we'll go back and fight again tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker, would you go next?
I was thinking about the civil rights leader, John Lewis, who I think most people know, has recently passed away. And you know, he was in the thick of the civil rights movement. He was beaten on the bridge at Selma and he still always emphasized that there was more that unites us than divides us. And I think that that's true in any community. I mean, if he could say that about the United States and how diverse we are, I think if you look at a small community like Moscow, surely a city council can see that there is more that we care about together than what divides us. And so I, I work with diverse families and groups and and you just have to rise above your differences and find your common ground and be civil and courteous. And so I think that surely we can all figure out a way to work together, even if we have different politics or different religions or beliefs or whatever.
Thank you very much. Ms. Klein, would you go next?
I'm going to ask you to restate the question again, please.
Certainly. "There are a variety of values and different opinions among the candidates here. Part of city government means working together. How would you find a way to work effectively with people you disagree with?"
So I am used to taking a vote. I, I live in a family of eight people. So I have a lot of experience with that. I, I am really a team player. I, I, I do give validation to everyone's opinions, but ultimately the final decision isn't really about our opinions. It's about the ultimate authority, which is the Constitution and the laws. So I wouldn't really let feelings or personal opinions cloud that type of decision-making.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harmon, you're next.
Yeah, I think this can be a real, real tricky thing to do, especially when people are, you know, i- if they're verbally already against you, it can be very hard. But I think one thing they could do first and foremost is try to be willing to do that hard work, be willing to know that in a disagreement that we have, it's going to, it's going to take time. And so that's going to require a lot of patience. It's going to require assuming the best out of the other person, even with a very different belief structure. Assume that that, that they want the best for the people of the town. I think that, you know, ultimately that's just going to be valuing the humanity that we all share. And ultimately knowing that they're a human being in the image of God and that we really want to care for that individual, even if it comes from a totally different viewpoint. So I, so I think that it's also going to take something like, you know, being new on city council is going to take a lot of humility. Because I mean, there's a lot of things I don't know about just how a city works. I don't know how, all, all the protocols exactly. I've, I've, I've done some Toast Mastery type things, but I don't have all of those things memorized. And so I, I, I think it's going to take a little bit of, yeah, just willing to be peacemaking. So I think, I think it's going to be challenging though. And I really want to make sure, of course, that everybody, and it's nice because we can vote, but we can also be civil. So we're going to have to assume each other want the best already and, and start from that standpoint.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis?
I am used to finding myself in that situation. We, I serve and represent SEL on a couple of trade associations and there's things that we do that, that we think about things differently. And sometimes that can feel weird to unlearn some preconceived notions of free markets or pros and cons of tax policy. So I'm used to it. I'm also used to it at home and in my family. I am, my grandpa's a lawyer, so I am used to, I'm used to hard conversations for fun. He uses the word fun, not always me. But one thing that I'm, I'm really really wanting to work on is making sure that I'm adopting, I'm reading a really great book. That's really having me rethink a lot of things. But I want to make sure that I'm bringing a scientist mindset to hard issues and not, not being a, the book, it's called Think Again by Adam Grant. And they talk, he talks about the other common thought patterns that you can get caught in, which are preacher, politician, or prosecutor. And so the idea of if you're adopting a scientist mindset going into issues, you're going to push for always rethinking or further understanding of the, of the world and others around you based on new information. So that's something that's, that I'm really excited to work on. I'm sure it takes practice. And if the other thing that this book talks about, that if you're, if you're proven wrong about something, that's not necessarily a bad thing. If you're looking at it through the lens of a scientist, you're looking, you're just, you're set, you're less wrong than you were before. So I, it's, yeah, it's, it's a practice thing. Absolutely. It's not always second nature. I'm looking forward to focusing on it. And then the last thing I'll say is people will ignore or dismiss the existence of a problem if they don't agree with the solution. And so I think there's a balance of, you know, the issues that can come before council. And, and sometimes coming from a, from a public commentary, right, or public hearings that people, there, people want to share their narratives and be heard. And it's our job as city council members to have them feel heard. And, but also being, being willing to learn from those experiences and I don't know, continue to focus on Moscow being a great place to live and raise a family.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you. A quote that comes to my mind immediately is by, from Morgan Freeman. He says, "Just because I disagree with you doesn't mean that I hate you. We need to relearn that in our society." But I love that quote. And I think that's something that we absolutely need to get back to is that a healthy disagreement is a good thing. It's become taboo and shouldn't be. We should be able to talk to one other with varying opinions. That's actually a healthy thing that you want on a city council is people to, to kind of come together with varying walks of life and varying opinions and, and understandings on different issues. So that way, as you disagree and then ultimately agree, you can come to a kind of a better collaborative answer. And then another quote that came to my mind is, "I don't take insults to my heart and I don't let compliments go to my head." And I think that that's something that we all have to keep in mind. We're sitting in a public setting, you know, there's probably going to be responses from people from wherever that may be insultive in nature, insulting in nature, complimenting in nature. And it's, it's our, it's our role to try and come to a common consensus and not let those things kind of get in the way or let, let us get in the way of making a better decision for our community. And so I would, I would just do my best to collaborate with whoever I served with on on, on the city council and listen to them and, and, and be okay to disagree in a healthy way. It wouldn't, I wouldn't come across as condescending or belittling, but I would, I would want to encourage that kind of communication and that healthy discussion on, on these issues that so many people are facing today. So I'm excited about it and, and I look forward to, to more collaboration and more communication. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis, if you don't mind, I'll start with you for this next question. This is a somewhat related to a question we heard before, but it zeroes in on the issue of affordable housing. We've heard general agreement that Moscow needs more affordable housing and that recently approved developments will not be affordable. Other cities in Idaho have identified private sector partners to develop quality transit oriented housing for people with low incomes. What could Moscow do to partner with the private sector for such developments here?
I almost clicked the wrong button. Great question. I saw that one come in in the chat and I think the, the asker has a, I'm really excited because I just recently was reading up on the Idaho Smart Growth Organization. And so I'm excited to talk to that asker about their experience. I do struggle with the role of city government or government in general addressing a, 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 a free market problem, which is affordable housing. I do think there's a delicate balance when affordable housing bleeds into a community issue, which then is, can become a government problem or something to address. So I think, I, I don't have a great answer for how they, how the city can partner with private. I don't know that it's the place of the city government to be recruiting developers who have unique development ideas. I do think that it's the city's place that if the community comes forth with an idea and a developer and they need guidance from the city, then the city can provide it. Or if there's changes to code or, or the existing zoning that needs to change, that that's the place for the city to interact with it. So I'd want to, I'd want to, I'm looking forward to following up with this person for some follow-up questions, but I don't have a great answer because I don't know that the city itself as city government has a role to partner with the private sector to address the affordable housing problem in, in the transportation example that was given.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, would you go next?
Yeah, thank you. This is a great question. And I need to know more about this private sector and what they would provide as an opportunity for development. I think it's a good idea to at least listen to what they have to share. The opportunities for them to kind of step in and develop these more affordable transit housing opportunities. I think that we should look into them and at least evaluate how it'll benefit the community. And I'm not exactly sure what that transient portion of that means and if it's going to be a longer term or a short term solution. But it's something that I would definitely be willing to, to look into and at least entertain and get more information about.
Very good. Thank you very much. Ms. Klein, would you go next?
So I don't really have a great answer for this either. I, I do know that there is some 3D printing technology coming. It's becoming more affordable. I, I don't know if there are any programs for kids that are wanting to go into the field of learning how to do carpentry and things like that. I haven't done a lot of research on that particular subject. But I, I do think that, that it's an issue. I'm not exactly sure how to solve it, but I think that's what part of getting together and figuring these things out is all about, so.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker, would you go next, please?
Affordable housing is such a complicated issue. And I think we have all kind of said that. I wish there was some simple answer, but I think that we are going to have to tackle this from many different avenues. And we're going to have to think creatively and we're going to have to use the expertise of our city staff who can kind of help us look at how developers' fees work and how requirements for city streets work and all those small things that we might be able to chip away at to, to help lower our housing costs. I think it's worth exploring these public-private partnerships. We already have some in place, but I know there are more to look at with different organizations. I think that it's important, it's, it's not very, like, it's not a very sexy answer, but it's important that the city council has a good relationship with our state legislature because they are driving a lot of different housing issues as well. And also they are, not to get too far into the weeds, but the way the state is not funding things like education, which is mandated in our constitution and our state constitution, is affecting the housing costs because we are paying a lot in property taxes, especially for education, for our public schools. So there are lots of ways to chip away at the cost of housing. It's a nationwide problem. And I just think it's going to take more than one simple solution. It's going to take a big creative effort to work on affordable housing. I think that it's worth exploring, looking at having new developments designate a certain portion towards right-sized or diversity of types of housing, like we do with the Parkland dedication. So that's, that's one creative solution that we can think about. But there are many, many different avenues to working on this issue.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harmon, would you go next?
Yeah, I see this issue as pretty straightforward. You basically want to have any developers you're working with be highly incentivized to do the kinds of housing that you want to be able to create. And so that's going to happen. We've talked before about building code, it's going to be zoning, it's going to be tax abatement zones possibly. And also just kind of, what, what does a developer want? They want to make more money on, money on a project. Right now, you get a lot more money if you build a larger house that costs $400,000. It's not, it's not really worth your time as a developer and all the hassle and everything you have to go with, with, if, if you're, if you're going to get a very little bit, a little bit of money. But like I said, there's all kinds of ways of incentivizing it to be able to do all the kind of goals you want. You can give rebates, like I say, on things that are environmentally friendly. You can have tax abatement zones for, so that the, the customer who's moving into that, or excuse me, the purchaser moves into that house, has to, gets to pay less taxes for a certain amount of time. This has been happening. My first house I bought actually in Portland, Oregon, was in a tax abatement zone in North Portland. And it really allowed me and my very young family to be able to have very low taxes for about five years. And that was extremely helpful, extremely attractive. And I don't know what incentives, incentives the actual builders had, but man, people wanted to snatch these houses up because they knew that their out-of-pocket was going to be so much less. As far as how the public needs to, you know, the, the city is going to work with, directly with the private sector. I, I want to be very careful on any kind of crony, capitalistic types of things. So we don't, we don't want to like pick certain developers to work with or, or, or things that can come across as being, you know, picking and choosing who kind of wins in this free market. We want to be able to offer those things to all kinds of developers. And the easiest way to do that is going to be with zoning and building code because that affects everybody equally.
Thank you very much. Ms. Russo?
Thank you. I think it was Kirk earlier that, that stated that he thinks this housing is really an economic development issue. You know, you can't, you can't recruit businesses and recruit people to come to the area if you don't have a place for them to live. Maybe it was Steve, but I think that the city is already involved in this issue. And I, I will not disagree with Julia. It is a sticky, humongous, giant issue. But the city supports the Partnership for Economic Prosperity. That organization formed as a result of the, let me go back and get my English right. As a result of taking stock of what's going on in the county, they, they sponsored a housing study. And SEL was part of that, the cities, both cities and both counties. And, and they, we've already begun as this housing leadership team, again, that came out of this study. We've already begun to do the beginning deep dive into the, the, some of the issues that would support some of the code changes and ordinance changes. We've got our toe in the water of ideas for incentives and things like that. You know, it, it, it's a regional group. And so what floats in Washington sometimes doesn't float in Idaho and what floats in Oregon doesn't float in, you know? So, so there's a lot to untangle and unwrap. But the city is already facilitating some of these things happening, directly making deals with, like Steve said, cronyism and I, I can't remember, capitalistic something. No, that's not the role of the city, but it is the role of the city to facilitate some of this research and information gathering going on with the housing leadership team as we speak.
Thank you very much. That actually brings us to the concluding portion of this session. We're going to have, each candidate will have one minute to summarize. And Mr. Harmon, if you don't mind kicking us off.
Yeah. Thanks again for the opportunity to talk here tonight. I'm really excited about the potential that Moscow, Idaho has for every single one of its citizens. One of the reasons that I felt compelled to run was one of our other city council, active city council members, when they were running a couple of years ago, actively campaigning against a few churches in town, one that I'm a member of. And that was very disheartening. When we brought up the issue of, of protections for people in LGBTQ, gender identity and things like that, and just kind of hearkened it back to me. And I said, hey, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be underneath the, the, or I should say, in the targets of anybody who would want to target a particular group. We are all God's children. We are all equal before Him. And we want to be able to live in peace, unity, and work together on these great things like housing, water, business development, making the downtown corridor super fun for things like the Oktoberfest. I mean, like, like this is what we want to be about in our town. And we don't want to identify individuals that we want to demonize in order to take away their confidence. And that could be, that, that, that should be every single group out there. So anyway, I hope, I hope we can get unified and I love you guys.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker, would you go next?
Sure. I, I just have to say, sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but it's Dr. Parker. I worked hard on my PhD. It's actually not Miss. So anyway, I just want to say that I have enjoyed going door to door, campaigning, learning more about Moscow, talking to my neighbors, talking to my community members. And it's been a really good experience for me to, to assume this leadership role in Moscow and to listen to people and learn more about our community and, and all of the great things here and all of the challenges here. I'm really passionate about community. I think that's where we have the most impact. And I really want to put that passion to good use and serve as a city council member. So I hope that everybody is getting out there to vote. Early voting has already started. And of course, Election Day is November 2nd. And I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on the forum as well as putting together the voter guide. I think that's really, really helpful. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And my apologies for not getting your title right. I do respect the work that goes into a PhD for sure. Ms. Lewis, I think, I think it's Ms. Lewis.
It is, yep. Works for me. Thanks to the League for hosting and for putting together the 411 Guide. Before I forget, I do have a website, haleylewis.com. Feels weird to have a, my own domain, but we're doing it. I've got a campaign Facebook page if anyone wants to reach out with questions. I do want to use part of my closing time to circle back to the non-discrimination ordinance, because I have a couple of other thoughts. I really appreciate what, what Julia had said. And my other thought is, at the end of the day, we know that words matter and life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness can be made harder or is harder for some people versus others. And in my mind, if we can, if calling groups that feel marginalized and bringing them to the table and to the light helps, helps draw attention to their very, very valid reality, that's, that's appropriate. I also, at the same time, I mean, Idaho has, has made it clear with some of the legislation that's been passed, not enabling our transgender friends to be able to change their gender on their birth certificate. I mean, it's, the words matter. The fact that we passed the non-discrimination ordinance matters because it meant that Moscow was taking a stand for our community members to make sure they felt included. So yeah, just wanted to offer that, that last thought after the fact. So thanks, everyone, for participating.
Thank you very much. Ms. Klein, would you go next?
Sure. So the reason why I'm running for city council is because in the last few years, I have become more politically educated. It's kind of started with the whole 5G towers. And I watched some city council meetings where the community was not being heard and decisions were being made not in their best interest or what they wanted. And I moved my family here because I wanted to put down roots and live somewhere safe and beautiful. And I really do love it here, here. I am completely invested in this area that I've chosen to put down roots for my family. And I just want to do anything that I can to protect and serve for this community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Russo?
Thank you, sir. It said the, it said the host muted me that time. That was kind of cool. How's that for a two-second answer? Anyway, my answer was, was gonna be. Sometimes in life, we get what we want. And I challenge each and every one of us as community members to decide tonight, or if we've already had our decision made, but look at this panel of, city council applicants in front of you. And if you can see, or if you have heard words tonight that inspired you, choose three of us. We are all willing to do the work. We're all not afraid of, not afraid of hard conversations. We are all willing to do the hard work. So remember to vote like Julia and everybody said so far. It is November 2nd. There are three of us that are going to be up there. And again, I hope that you choose me. I am still feeling like I have good work to do and I look forward to working for our home together.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor.
I just want to thank everyone for your help and for hosting this for the League of Women Voters and for putting this forum on. And it's been a pleasure to speak with all of you this evening, just like with the other forums. I really am excited about where Moscow is going. It was voted as, in 2018, as one of the best places to raise a family by livability. I think that's a great way to keep things. livability. I think that's a great way to keep things going. I want it to be, continue to be a great place to raise a family. And it can be safe, continue to grow in a sustainable way, to have fiscal transparency with our community. It'd be so great to have some more involvement with our community and buy in and on these decisions that we make as we move forward and continue to grow in a, in a healthy way. I, I just want to just real quickly clarify that when I say all men are created equal, I certainly am including women there. And and I, I don't want to discriminate against anybody there. And I meant everybody when referring to that old context of men. So, and then I hope you can look at my Facebook page there. Kirk Taylor for Idaho is, is where I'm found on Facebook. You're more welcome to shoot me an email too, if you want. My email is kirkta at gmail dot com. I look forward to speaking with you. I hope that I can represent you in a, in a fair way and in a, in a sustainable growth in the future. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you all very much for participating in this session. My thanks to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this panel. I thank the candidates not only for participating in this session, but also for their willingness to run for public office. It's not an easy job. And I thank most, last but not least, the folks who attended tonight. Thank you very much.